Thank you so much, and our next item is to supervisor Parks.
Thank you, this is kind of bittersweet because it's saying goodbye to a good friend who's leaving our area but going on to doing something that anybody I think in the world would love to be able to do. So I'm gonna come down to the microphone down there and if Woody Smith would join me, I wanted to present a resolution.
I have to say Woody is going from being in one of the most beautiful counties in the world to going to live in a place that I think is probably one of the most beautiful places in the world. Woody Smith, this is a resolution to you, I'm so glad that you're here. Woody serves with me on the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and this is a resolution honoring Woody as the outgoing Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area Superintendent. Whereas Woody has been a tireless champion for preserving and expanding public lands and protecting wildlife habitat during his 21 years working with the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area and where he is known as a soft-spoken man of integrity who has dedicated his time and efforts to ensuring that the Santa Monica Mountains have high quality standards while remaining accessible to the public and his hard work secured funding for the construction of the King to Love Visitor Center and for maintaining the Nature Bridge Environmental Education Campus in the Santa Monica Mountains. And whereas throughout his 11-year tenure as superintendent, Mr. Smith has successfully overseen 154,000 acres of mixed public open space and private land surrounded by an urban population, has acquired 85,000 acres of public parkland to facilitate the protection of native wildlife, has vastly improved the quality of park facilities, increased safety standards for wildland fires, and has maintained a strong working relationship with local government agencies, California State Parks, and the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And whereas Mr. Smith's great service has been recognized locally and nationally, he was named the Los Virginous Homeowners Federation 2011 Citizen of the Year, received the 2005 National Park Service Director's Award for Superintendent of the Year for Natural Resource Stewardship, and was lauded by President George W. Bush in 2003 for his exceptional work to reduce maintenance backlog and work amicably with multiple agencies. And whereas in April of 2012, Mr. Smith will take on a new challenge in his distinguished career to become Deputy Superintendent of Yosemite National Park. Isn't that nice? Yosemite National Park, it really is the jewel of the National Park Service, bringing his deep reverence for the land and great vision for maintaining California's natural beauty to a new site for people to enjoy for years to come. And I remember so many different things with Woody and wonderful experiences, the bio blitz, he was also instrumental in getting a bus so people could go to the different parks. And then a lot of late nights on the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, good work in his offices helping to identify the concern of anticoagulants that have lost a lot of our wildlife, bobcats, and mountain lions, and no doubt raptors and others, so bringing that attention to the forefront. And standing there with George W. Bush at the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy over in the Satuiva area, in the Sycamore Canyon area, so just a really storied career and always with a passion, so I look forward to giving him the mic too because I know he will share that with us. But I'll present this on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and that we take great pleasure in honoring you for your dedicated service as Superintendent of the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area, wish you wonderful success in your future and a lot of enjoyment and come back and visit us and if not, well, I'll come visit you. Congratulations so much.
Well, Linda, thank you to members of the board, thank you for this honor, I really appreciate this. Not only have I been the superintendent of the greatest national park unit in the system, in my humble opinion, in the Santa Monica Mountains, but I've also been a resident in Ventura County and in the city of Moore Park in particular for 25 years and I absolutely love the community, I love this county, I've raised my kids in the public schools here. Leaving this county is probably the most difficult decision in all of this, both for my wife, my kids, I can't say enough good things for what you do on behalf of the people of Ventura. The National Park Service is also very thankful to be here in this wonderful county, to have two national park units here is a real treat and it just underscores just how beautiful this county is, sense of history and these wonderful places where we have wildlife and people and visitors all intermixing and interacting in good health and in good condition. Channel Islands National Park is a more traditional national park unit, the Santa Monica Mountains is atypical, very different, and in many ways a blueprint for how conservation across this country can work. It is an intermixing of private lands, of cities, communities, of local state, park, and other public lands, and national park lands, all working together and in a way that respects each other's rights and governance and requirements, yet produces a vibrant mosaic of beautiful public lands and communities and cities all working together and generating good economic benefit and good health. And I truly believe we have a model, if you haven't had a chance to really explore it and take a look at it, I encourage you to do so. I want to thank again Supervisor Parks for your years of support and service to the recreation area and for this honor, thank you all very much.
Thank you Woody. Thank you, this time I'd like to invite Sheriff.
Can I just say thank you, I'd like to say thank you Woody, I really appreciate your passion and your service. I think that the moving to Yosemite is probably the crown and the cap or whatever, the jewel in the crown, one of my very favorite parts, next to our local ones of course, so congratulations with that and may they lift you up when I'm there next year.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is tsunami awareness week and I'd like to invite the Sheriff of Ventura, Laura Hernandez, and Laura, she's gonna, oh, I'm sorry.
We're gonna let the people do the work.
Okay, okay, then I want to apologize and I want to add, Laura Hernandez is gonna read the information for me and I'll be down to you. So the important people are gonna take this, right Laura?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Saragosa, Supervisors. Michael Powers, CEO. Proclaiming March 25th through March 31st Tsunami Awareness Week. Whereas Ventura County contains 48 miles of coastal line which includes three cities, the naval base Ventura County, Port of Onimi, county unincorporated areas, and over 23,000 residents that are vulnerable to tsunamis. And whereas Tsunami Awareness Week is a nationwide effort to encourage individuals to be prepared for tsunamis through education and awareness. And whereas the first anniversary of the 9.9 magnitude of Tohoku earthquake tsunami and nuclear incident was commemorated on March 11th in Japan, and whereas the county of Ventura has completed placement of tsunami warning signs along the coast and is currently in the process of obtaining tsunami-ready certification from the National Weather Service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pride in proclaiming March 25th through March 31st Tsunami Awareness Week. And the board further encourages all residents to take the opportunity to prepare for all types of local hazards in their homes, businesses, and schools presented this 27th day of March 2010, 2012.
Thank you Laura, and let's go to you to the boss.
Good morning Chairman, Members of the Board, CEO. My name is Cynthia Elliott, I'm a program administrator for the Ventura County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. Since 1812, there have been nine recorded tsunamis that have caused local damage. Many residents and businesses work, play, and live near our coast and need to know the importance of the tsunami hazard area. Our county has done a tremendous amount of work in the last year in regards to tsunami preparedness. We have mailed tsunami brochures to approximately 8,000 residents and businesses in the tsunami hazard zones. We've updated the Ventura County Operational Area Tsunami Evacuation Plan. We've installed 80 tsunami hazard signs in the unincorporated areas of the county and we have completed our application to be recognized as a tsunami-ready county. The tsunami-ready program, which was developed by the National Weather Service, is designed to assist coastal communities like ours through better planning, education, and awareness. And I'm happy to report this morning that Ventura County is now a tsunami-ready county. I'd like to introduce Eric Bolt from the National Weather Service.
Good morning, it's good to see everyone again. I'm Eric Bolt, the Warning Coordination Meteorologist in the National Weather Service and my counterpart is Mark Jackson, Meteorologist in Charge. We're very proud to be here today to partner with Ventura County on the proclamation for Tsunami Awareness Week. This is the time to educate ourselves and to prepare for tsunamis as they can happen anytime and anyplace along our coast. And recognition of tsunami-ready, this is a National Weather Service program that puts the county and different communities through a checklist to be prepared for disaster. You heard about the signs being installed as a final step to become tsunami-ready and they join four other counties in the state of California as tsunami-ready, we congratulate them on that, thank you.
We want to thank you tremendously in behalf of the county and the boss here and we're gonna give you this. One of four counties out of 58, it's great work.
I'd like to just offer congratulations to all the staff and the sheriff's leadership team, to Laura and to Dale and others. It's a lot of work to get this recognition and designation and it's not just that, it really is a team that understands, is prepared, and our county is better prepared for tsunami in our great coastal corridor, so it's been a lot of work, a few chairs and co-chairs in the EPC, but lots of work by leadership teams, so thank you.
And also I want to thank you, thank you so much to the EPC Committee and Laura and the Sheriff and all the participants, thank you for your good work. Thank you. Okay, our next item is gonna be, I'm gonna take item 31, no, 34. We're gonna take, item board, item 34.
Good morning Chair Zaridosa, Board Members, Mr. Powers, Phil Nelson with the Public Works Agency, I want to thank you for taking this item at this time. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk with your board about a recommendation we've made to pay a stipend on the DCMC replacement hospital wing project. I'd like to start first by just making sure your board is aware that we've qualified three design-build teams as shown on the screen and contained in the board letter. These three teams are, I want to put out, are the best in the industry, not regionally but nationally. They're well-known for their work in hospital construction, healthcare construction, award-winning nationally, and I constantly am reminded that we have the best teams working together and competing for our project. They don't always work together, but these same names always seem to be showing up in different projects. And here's a list of some of the projects that they've completed, either individually or some of them as teams in recent. I want to just kind of go back and remind your board again why we chose to go design-build on this project. Probably the main reason, the best benefit that we get is the single point of responsibility. I apologize, I do have copies of the presentations, let me. I'll be referring to those a little bit later in the slides. So the benefits of design-build is the single point of responsibility, unlike design-bid-build where we have a builder, a designer, and the owner, and when issues arise, sometimes figuring out who's exactly responsible can be a trick. With design-build, the design and the build part are one single point of responsibility. So you increase the collaboration, reduce the risk of conflicts, it just works for a better project, you avoid the risk of a bid bust. When you bid a project, sometimes the bids come in, it exceeds your budget, and your two options at that point are to increase the budget or start over. On a project like this, that could be tremendously expensive, both the cost and time, using design-build, we avoid that. You also reduce the change orders and claims, the potential there for it because of that single point of responsibility. In a combined study from Penn State University and the Construction Industry Institute estimates the time savings on design-build is upwards around 33% overall and the savings of cost is around 10% in cost. I can tell you in our project alone, in time alone, we're gonna save 18 to 24 months in the timeline simply because of the OSHPOD review, the way we're able to conduct it, design-build versus design-bid-build. So design-build definitely in our perspective is the right way to go. So the reason we're here today though is to talk about the stipend and where that comes into is the heart of the design-build process is this design-build competition. And there are really two methods for performing this competition. The first is referred to as a bridging method, that's where an owner goes out, hires a single architect to come up with a schematic drawing. A schematic drawing indicates here's the size of the building, how many stories, here's where the rooms go, that sort of thing. They put that out to the design-build teams who then complete the design development and that's what the proposal becomes. In that method, there's only one design really you're working from, the one that our architect that we hired would have come up with. Had we gone that route, we would have spent probably around $4 million developing that and again, the final design would have been based on the vision and idea of one singular architect. We didn't go with that method, we went with a method called program method. That starts earlier in the process in that what we'll provide our design team is a program narrative. It really is, well, it consists of nine binders and about 1,500 drawings to communicate, here's the current condition, here's the functional program we want you to complete, i.e. how many ORs, how many ICU rooms, where the adjacencies are, but we really don't go into great definition as to how this initial design would be done, that's what we're asking all the design-build teams to do. So the program method, we offer this narrative information, we spent a little less than a million dollars in developing that, and the design-build teams are gonna give us a conceptual design with enough detail for us to be able to evaluate each design and come up with what we think is the best fit for our project, the one we want to move forward with on our project. And as I indicated, we're using that program method. One of the other benefits of that is we will have three designs to choose from and if we pay a stipend, we can pick some of the elements out of the other two designs we don't select and incorporate those into our final design. So we really have the best of all worlds, we get three designs to choose from rather than one, and we have a lot of flexibility in how we move forward.
Can I ask a question? When you say the stipend, this, I guess I'm pitching it in a much different way as you explained. You're, and we're not asking for a stipend, just a price, we're also, this stipend really is, what you said is, we're asking these people to do design work, we're asking for their part like an architect, we'd be paying an architect to do, right?
That's correct.
And so the difference is we're paying these two people to do it and then because we pay them, we have ownership, we can use it.
That's correct.
So in a sense, it's not, it's a stipend, it's really a stipend, it's a design cost. Is that a way that I could look at that?
You know, stipend is a common word in the industry, but probably a more accurate description is design fee, just as you.
Right, because otherwise we'd be paying an architect to do some of this extra work in the same way.
That's correct.
But because of this, we get flexibility of a couple designers working without paying the large cost of say, okay, two different architects go out and give us and we'll take a look and mix it together and somebody did. Is that clear?
That is correct, and I've got a slide that kind of talks a little bit more about that.
Let me ask you a quick question, so those, if we pay for those designs, then we can use those designs as components to whatever wins the RFP.
That's correct.
If a board that you have people to do that work.
The designers will tell you that each one of them will come up with all the best ideas, but that's usually not what happens. The one we pick will come up with the design of course we want, but the others too will contain good ideas, value engineering, or cost-saving ideas that may not be in the one that we chose. By paying a stipend, we own those other two and we can use whatever we want and incorporate it.
Those components make up.
That is correct, and I've got an example, at least in one case, where recently in Los Angeles, one of the design-build teams we had did exactly that, they used elements from unsuccessful proposal, incorporated them in their design, saved their owner about $600,000.
So that's the savings, you know, for whoever we pick on the RFP, that we can use those elements to make up for any.
Right, we can use them as the owner, we own them, we can use them in any way we Trying to give your board an idea of the level of effort that goes into these proposals that we'll use to make that final selection, and I've got in front of me and you have some examples of what these items are. There are five main key components, there's the technical proposal, which is the big binders that you were handed, they speak to all of the requirements that are in the RFP, all of the things they have to address in terms of not just the layouts and how the building will look, but all of the life cycle cost information, safety information, schedule, all kinds of information. Attachment to, to the board letter is the section out of the RFP that defines all of the information that they need to provide to us, so rather than go into great detail, if you're curious, you can look at that. But it's a significant amount of effort in that technical proposal. Then there's the presentation boards, which you see on the floor down here. There'll probably be upwards of 22 of these boards that will be presented from each team to help communicate their design and answer all the requirements of the RFP. There'll be conceptual design drawings, which are just that, they're rolled-up drawings, they're showing schematically or in drawing form, the building that they're proposing with enough detail to communicate to us what we would be getting if we move forward with that team. There's also a site study model, like the one that Sheldon here down here on the floor. They'll be creating one of those models so that the review team can look at that from all angles and really get an idea of what that design's gonna be. And then finally the price proposal, they have to price all of this and that number they propose, that's the number they're saying they can do all of this for, for that number. So they're proposing that amount and their proposal for their work obviously needs to be in sufficient detail where they can give us a good price proposal, they can feel confident in that number they're giving us and be as very competitive as possible against the other two design-build teams. The cost for preparing all of that information and material is somewhere around $2.4 million is what we've learned from the design-build teams. It's a significant expense, most of that, a good portion of that is probably borne by the designer themselves. I've got a few slides, here's the, not ours obviously, but the review team that we will assemble to go through all of this information, schematic drawings, the boards are laid out in this example, similar to the boards we have here, another example of a study model that we will have to review. So exactly what is the stipend? Well stipend, or design fee maybe is a better term, is an accepted practice, it's considered an integral part of the industry when a design competition is used, it's considered by Design Build Institute of America. It's also a very common practice in that 80%, or 80% of the public healthcare, large healthcare projects in California that we've identified recently have had a stipend. Exhibit 1 to your board letter lists a number of projects that we've identified that have stipends. Average stipends for a project of our type, our type being OSHPOD Level 1 acute care facility using program documents, because program documents put a greater burden on the design-build team to prepare their proposal. They're starting from, you know, a much less developed design on our part if you will and giving us more in return. Average cost, or average stipend there was about 0.36% and what we're recommending your board, the $300,000 stipend is 0.15%. Think the questions sometimes come up is what does private industry do in this case? Well, there's two things to consider there, one is the private industry, they're not required to do the design competition that we are. So they can in a very informal process, maybe just through some interviews, they're able to go out and select a design-build team without going through all of this effort. But when they do go through this effort, it is normal and customary that they offer a stipend. And I'd like to add, I do have members from all three design teams here this morning, some have changed flights in order to be here, it's that important to them, and I know that they could address that to your board, any questions you might have concerning stipends they've received in the past, or some of the other information that I've been covering. So I think the real big question is, is how do we benefit by a stipend? You know, I wouldn't recommend offering a stipend if the county wasn't getting a benefit, if it wasn't something we would get a tangible benefit from. And I think we do, and there's a number of ways. First is, as I indicated in our competition, design-build teams are going, they're making a significant financial risk, well over $2 million each one of them to submit this proposal, only one of them is going to get the job. So two of them are gonna lose over $2 million just going through this process. We as our public agents, we always reserve the right during different stages of the process to not continue. One of those steps is after we've received proposals, we always have the option to not continue on with the project and not award the contract to anybody. It helps to communicate to our design-build partners that we're serious about this project, we have some financial commitment as well when we can offer a stipend. So I think communicating that message is important. It also helps us to compete with other owners. The stipend factors into particularly the designers but also the builders, business model in deciding which projects they're going to pursue. And I think the teams can speak much better to that than I can. But when there are other owners that are offering a stipend or offering, making their project more attractive financially, then that's information design-build teams use in determining which projects are they gonna focus their effort on. Because they assume they only get maybe one out of three of these, you can only sustain so many losing ventures if you will. So they want to have fairly competitive chance or a good probability that they can be very competitive in the project. Without a stipend, it changes the business calculus and they may choose not to go forward. The other item Supervisor Floyd pointed out is we will own all of this material, we can use any portion of it in any way that we want. Without a stipend, we won't be able to do that. The stipend also allows the designers and the subs to, encourages them to expend a little more effort, better develop their design and proposal information, allows them to get better pricing. The more information they have in their proposals, the better pricing information they get, the more competitive they get, the more value we're gonna give in our proposals, the more value we'll get to choose from. And then probably lastly is because we get all of this information, we're gonna save over $4 million, maybe $6 million with the design effort for only $600,000, the payment of two stipends. So in terms of the cost benefit and what we get out of it, Snap believes it is a definite benefit to the county to pay a stipend. As I mentioned earlier, one team shared with us that recently they used some value engineering ideas from non-successful proposals in their design effort and they feel they saved the owner about $508,000 just in that effort. So that alone would cover the cost of any stipend that we would pay. What is the risk of not paying a stipend? I think probably the biggest one is two design builders, specifically designers, have told us, without a stipend, this doesn't fit into their business model anymore. The risk becomes too great, it affects their ability to pursue future business, and they would choose not to continue on the project. It'd be better for them to cut their losses at this point and not move forward. The builders on the other hand have told us, have not been quite as emphatic, but have indicated if they don't move forward with the designer they have, they have to really reevaluate, do I start all over, do I try to pre-qualify more designers, start over with OSHPOD and all of that, if that's worth it to them as well. So we believe there's a risk of losing up to two teams, maybe all three without a stipend. As I indicated, we do have the teams here to answer any questions on that particular note if you have any. note if you have any. So finally, in conclusion, I'd like to say we have the best teams in the industry. We know that paying a stipend is a common practice, 80% of large healthcare projects recently have done that in the public sector. We're going to receive over $4 million in design effort for $600,000, we'll own all of that, we can use it any way we want, and we risk losing some teams, losing the design build teams, and risk the project, I think, if we don't offer the stipend. And with that, I'd like to end with our recommendation that you approve the $300,000 stipend as recommended.
Thank you for the report. I have four, I'm sure if you have questions, but I have two speakers, and, okay, we have, first speaker is James Patness.
We'll go ahead and decline both of those, this will continue.
And James McKenzie also?
Yes, we just wanted to know, we were here to answer questions.
Okay. And I think we have a lady on here.
We've got my card this time back here.
Okay, Douglas. You're next, Douglas. And the two other folks are over here for questions.
How do you do? I wasn't come here to speak on this today, but I read about it last week, on Friday. What concerns me about this is it's a given away of tax dollars. I know these people have probably beautiful designs, I know that they probably spent a lot of time on it, but when you guys sent out your RFP for a design build project, they knew the rules went in. There is no stipend in that package, nowhere, there was nowhere, there was no listing of a stipend anywhere in there, whether it's public policy and other projects in the state, it shouldn't include it. This project's probably a couple hundred million dollars, so whoever was going to win the project should really get the price down there so they get the projects, they don't lose the design money they've spent on it. I'm a contractor, I'm a small-time contractor, I'm the size of, I'm a bug compared to these guys. I spend a lot of time on proposals, I meet with clients, I spend 40, 50 hours, 60 hours, I don't get paid for that. I could, I don't. So this was not part of the original deal. My other question, I have some other points I want to bring up. On this design bill, whoever does get the contract, does it come with a warranty, five, 10, 20 years, as most design build projects are? What's the guarantee of no cost overruns? Is that built into the contract? Are there going to be any cost overruns if the county changes their mind on things? There was, we talked about saving $580,000 to give $600,000 away. What I ask is, if there are things in those other designs, why not take that $600,000 and say, hey, we want to pay you for your design later? What happens if we don't use any of those designs from the other two plans? We've just given away $600,000. I don't understand that. It's like, you're giving away $600,000, maybe it's a way to, and then make them happy because they bid on the project. But here's another problem. We, we talked about, last week, you were talking about, hey, we're rebidding a bunch of stuff to save money. Two weeks ago, this board was up here, the whole entire room was filled with labor unions and non-labor, non-union companies and union companies, and the big mantra, I can't believe this wasn't discussed back then, it must have been known, I mean, there's a lot of nice presentations out there that looks like they spent a lot of time on, so this has probably been known for months on end, they're going to do a stipend, so now all of a sudden, it's put on us in late hours saying, we have to do it because we're going to lose these great people. Well, there's other future projects for the county, I mean, take them off your preferred list, if they want to, I mean, or put it in the future documents on future projects, but don't turn around at the last minute and come back and say, hey, we're going to add this after the fact. You're changing the rules, that isn't fair. What about those other people that lost out? What also could happen is, you're going to have a floodgate of people bidding on projects with the county, which would be a good thing, but are they all going to get stipends too if they don't get the project? I mean, we're, it's like a free fall for free money. So I'm not against the project, I think it may be a good project. Also, why are we designing a brand-new hospital? I don't know how many beds are in it, but I'm sure in the state of California, there's been hospitals built in the last two to three years. Why couldn't the county just find a standard design that the state of California's already approved, and use that design and go to one of those companies, take three companies that already built these three different hospitals, and say, all right, give us your best shot, you've already built this hospital before. Why are we reinventing the wheel? I don't understand this. So that's all I have to say. I just hope that, I mean, you're, I feel bad, they spent $2 million on the design, and now you're going to give $300,000. Last two weeks, you're talking about, you're going to lose all this money if you don't get this labor agreement pact approved, and now we're going to spend another $600,000, so I don't understand. I would say hold off on this, vote on a $600,000 stipend. It's not 300,000, 1.5%, it's 3%. So just think about it, it's the taxpayers' money after all. And also, the other thing I ask is, is some of the money for this hospital being paid by federal and state dollars? Do they agree to stipends? If they do, tell the state and feds, hey, we're giving them $600,000 for free. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff, if you can answer. Okay, okay. Board member?
Well, I was just going to ask Mr. Elsner if he'd like to comment on any of this.
Yes, we'd like to make a point that we, we're not changing the rules, as the gentleman suggested, we've not issued the RFP, we've not put anything out there yet that would suggest that we want you to propose, or we've implied you're going to propose without a stipend. We were waiting to settle this question before we issued the RFP, so we wouldn't know whether or not to include it in the RFP. He might have been referring to the pre-qualification process, which we did about a year ago, but typically, there isn't a discussion of a stipend that goes with that. The purpose of that is to determine who are qualified contractors and builders that could even be considered to issue, to receive an RFP. So I guess from our perspective, we wouldn't be necessarily changing it, we're just trying to get this question answered before we issue the RFP.
So we have, we're going to put an RFP out, two to three qualified bidders, after we've come up with what the design is, or continue with the designs as we go.
We have developed the program information, so we've developed, this is how big we want our hospital, how many ORs, you know, everything that kind of go in, that part is pretty much done. So we're ready to issue the RFP. And what the teams will work on is taking that narrative information and producing all of this that we can then look at to decide which one of their designs we like the most and what to move forward with. And actually, they've already started some of that effort, we've started conversations with OSHPOD, and so they've already expanded, I think, upwards to $500,000 or $600,000 just in the design effort today.
Tell me why on your piece you have up there that only 80% of the people do stipends? Why is it 100%? What was the difference in that 20%?
In some cases, I, you know, I don't know for certain the answer to that, my speculation would be in some cases that either the projects are smaller, or in some cases, they weren't providing that program information. There are some owners that have provided nearly design documents, they've filled this gap, they've hired an architect to provide all this information, and all we want you to be, design build team, is kind of complete the drawings and get a permit. Not really technically a design build process, I think some people jokingly refer to it as a design drawing process. And so in that case, because the risk or the amount of effort on the design build teams, a part is so small that sometimes a stipend isn't offered.
Right. We talk about $2 million in loss, I struggle with that, because the business they're in is the business to build hospitals. The business they're in is to bid, be competitive, and get the job. And part of their service is, we're able to be a large contractor who has a design team available to them. A lot of these, some of the people are already on staff that are paying anyways, so as we know, we're just recovering the costs through some of these kind of situations. So I struggle a little bit with that idea. We heard the comment that, you know, other contractors bid, and there's no question, they go through design, and they spend a lot of time. We talked about this this morning with fidelity situation, you go out to the marketplace, those people could spend 500 hours putting together bids and do all that stuff and try to get opportunity to manage that $500 million we have, they're not going to, if they don't get it, they're not going to get any money for it. It's part of what they've put into their business model, I think we have some of that. So it's a little bit of a struggle, the idea of paying this. As I said earlier today, the only other thing I was looking at is the ideas that we're buying design and we get to use proprietary information, it becomes our information. So I understand that a little bit, that's why I say when you talk about the stipend issue, it's really more, I look at it as, we'll pay you to do this design that we work, because again, these people could spend, I don't know, how long it's going to take them to do this.
We give them four months to prepare.
Four months, and they're going to go through a lot of work. And if we went and asked a designer, please go through this yourselves, come up with a design, what would we pay them to do that?
If we develop bridging documents, probably would have been around $4 million.
$4 million? Would be, would that be completion, completed?
No, that would be what we would send out for proposal, and I don't have a number of cost.
And then, okay, $4 million or whatever that number, and they're going to give us those same things, we have $1,000 each or $600,000? How close are we to that same?
The product we will get in our, in the program method that we're using, is not as completely developed as the product that you would get if we used bridging.
Can you compare apples to apples?
You know, if I could, I'd like to ask our, we brought in a consultant to help us with this, who has a lot of experience in this area, if I could, I'd like to have her.
Which, which her name?
Rebecca Lasson.
Okay, Rebecca.
Rebecca Lasson is with RG Group, has extensive experience in hospital construction, design build, and I think she might be able to help us.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Phil. The package that we'll receive from the design builders, if you were to buy those services just as design work, it would cost you approximately $2.2 million. So what you're going to get for $300,000, if you asked an architect to develop those drawings, just fee for service, it would be about $2.2.
So you see, as some of we hired, not working for us, not working with builders, is you see a value in that?
Yes, I do. I've done over $4 billion in design build projects in the public sector, and the value has been that it's a single-source responsibility, as Phil has indicated, but there's been approximately a 10% savings in overall project cost because of the time that's saved, because of the loss, there's no coordination issues. So you have an architect that's doing a set of drawings, you have a builder building them, usually if there's a discrepancy, you've got the owner in the middle paying. So that doesn't occur, because the contractor and the architect are one team, they resolve those issues themselves. And then you don't have claims, because they resolve them on paper.
All right, I understand that. I just look at it from the standpoint, if I got the opportunity to possibly do a $250 million project, am I willing to afford $200,000? That's my real issue here, and I think that's the root of the speaker. Anything else?
I think it's, you're buying the intellectual property, and I think professionals want the acknowledgement that you value what they're giving you. So it's a, in some ways, it's a resell.
They value when they get the project, is I think.
But the other two that don't get it, that you waste a value of them to pay them a small design fee for what you're, they're giving you, because what they're going to develop is going to be very site-specific to your project. So they're bringing that knowledge, and you're just giving them a small amount of money and acknowledgement of that.
And I understand, I think everybody, you know, it's part of the enterprise, you go out and do it, it's probably normal. But on the other side, what have you seen with the idea of doing all this work? As Phil had talked about, the idea of grabbing maybe that one piece out of what somebody else, that one nugget that all of a sudden, wow, that added so much value. Do you see a lot of that, what you do?
I do, I actually have.
Just to me, that's worth paying for.
Right, I will give you an example on another public hospital that we did, where the design builder came in with a completely different foundation system. And that actually gave the owner 40,000 additional square feet, which equaled about $4 million of additional value to that project. Because they looked at the way their subcontractors were going to do the work, and they picked very site-specific ways of doing it. They also look at how they buy materials and equipment, they have relationships in the industry that they can bring to this. So it was very, I've seen great value brought to design build projects, because they're bringing their expertise, their buying power and their knowledge to your specific project.
So you don't think that knowledge base is what gives them the edge to get the job in the first place?
Well, I think there's that knowledge that does give them the edge, but in a design build project, you're actually bringing the design contractor and all the subcontractors to the game and asking them to put their ideas in from the beginning. Usually, you have architects and engineers over here who do all the design, and truthfully, they've never physically built something, we just design it. And then you have the subcontractors and the contractors who have to go out and buy it and figure out how to do it. Now you've got them merged together.
Have you, one other question, have you seen it also at the end of this, if, where we would get a credit from the builder who gets the job, so at the end it really only costs us $300,000? So it's not our bid plus 300,000? Or is it three bidders we're doing, or whatever?
So, well, yes, I have, but it's been in the additional value that they've brought to your project.
I understand, I understand, I just, I understand the issue, I struggle with the 80% piece, but I do like the idea that we're getting something in there.
Let me address the 80% piece. There are projects, and they have been federal projects primarily, so for example, like Pendleton. And these projects that fall in that 20% that do not pay, those are completely bridged documents. They're not based off of a program of criteria and performance, those actually have been ones like for Camp Pendleton, for veterans hospitals, where they have a full set of bridging documents.
So we're not talking apples?
You're not truly talking total apples to apples.
Okay, great, thank you.
So you're saying, take eight and a half by 11 in the program, and now design us an entire building, versus, I'll give you this total preliminary design package, now you think about how you can make that better.
While you're at the podium, go ahead, while you're at the podium, if I could ask a couple things. One, we had the suggestion that we should just go out and buy a prepackaged design, et cetera, with this site-specific site that we have here, your professional opinion about the feasibility of doing that?
Hospitals are complicated facilities. It's not like going out and buying a module and saying, this fits with your operational and your plan for service. So this hospital is very much tailored to the kind of care and services you provide, from your diagnostic and treatment, to the number of beds that you have, to what your patient population is.
And it also has to match up with the other hospitals?
Absolutely.
Evaluation and...
Because the Fainer Hospital is still one of your bed towers, so you need to integrate that in with what's available there, that is seismically safe.
Okay, and I think you've convinced certainly me, and certainly our staff, I think the board, that design build is the way to go. You guys all have done that. In your professional opinion, will a couple of these designers walk away if we didn't do the stipend?
Yes.
Right, okay. And then, for all of you, if the designers, if two designers walked away, I assume we would not go forward with our RFP, because we would only have one person left to bid, we'd have to start the pre-qual process over again, is that correct?
That's right.
And that would be, that delay would then be, we talked a lot about the monthly charge for delay, so we'd be paying, we'd be paying far more than that in the monthly charge for delay than we would be paying in these stipends if, by the time we went out for the new request for qualifications.
We went out, I heard about this time last year is when we started the pre-qual process.
Right, so, I know, I know.
I agree, I know what you're talking about, but I, let's do it for the real reasons, but I know what you're doing.
And that's what I was trying to ask before we...
Sure, I think you, I think you asked very good question, I think you wanted to correct.
Yeah, I think you got, you got a good answer, and I agree with that, I think we've heard about delay and the cost of delay, so.
Right, and again, I think it's, it's unique in the idea, we've been, I've been up here five and a half years, we've never been a stipend for all the projects.
I, I agree.
And again, we have, again, it's new, it's designed, but at the end of the day, it's hard for the average person to think, every business out there bids them to do something, but, and, but what you're talking about is getting something, I think, that has value. That's why, to me, it's different. I come from a business where we spend thousands and tens of thousands of bids and never getting opportunities, you know, they still work, but on the idea, I don't always go and say, here, take my design, take it, and I'll help you do it, and you can still use that to improve your project. And that's what I think is important.
And if I could add one other thing to you that I think is consistent with what you're saying, is not only are we getting something, we are avoiding, we have cost avoidance here by doing this. This avoids doing all of the bridging documents ourselves at $4 million. So if somebody says, you have to do something unusual here that will, that will strike, that could strike some people as odd, but it saves, you know, all of the expense of doing the design yourself, and we're hearing estimates of $4 million.
And I think you're right, and we spent hours talking about delays in this project before, that were $400,000 a month, and we're talking to our consultants that we'd incur those again, and we're getting something plus or stuff, I see value from it. And we're getting something plus or stuff, and I, I see value for a question.
You know, I, I think by proprietary talent by doing this, you get three who we've already proved is our highest talent. And we get all of their information that we can pull from, insert, replace, move around, make decisions. I, I think, if you go and to look to do some major landscapes, this is going to make it too simple, I'm sure, but to do major landscaping, you go out and you get bids from folks, but they, a good landscaping company comes in and says, okay, I'm going to give you this plan, but it's going to cost you upfront X amount of dollars to cover my costs of putting this plan together for you. Whether you use me or not, you're going to pay a hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars. I know I've been there, done that. And you pay it because you want their best talent. And then you get as many bids as you need, and you say, okay, this is the one I'm now going to choose. So you've already paid that up. It's simple, I get, but you pay for the proprietary, proprietary talent.
You know, I, I think we're going to save some money, I think it's a point of investment. I'm going to, I'm going to support this PLA, but, I mean, excuse me, let me back up. I wanted a PLA, but I'm supporting, but I'm supporting this project because I want to put our local workers to work. You know, I initially wanted a PLA, and that's what was in my mind, but I think that, that once we get going ASAP, we can put our local workers to work, and that, I wanted to support it for that reason.
I, I had also heard that some of them may not bid unless they're provided this. Is that correct? And to me, we need to have that competitive bidding because it could end up saving us well more, a lot more than what we would pay in this, in this stipend.
Okay, just two, my two final points, Michael, thank you too, is that, I believe I heard Mr. Nelson say at the beginning, this design-build process can save us as much as 18 months in the construction of the project.
Eighteen to twenty-four months.
Which is huge cost savings on investment upfront for a huge long-term payoff at the end. And then just lastly, to reiterate that, that there is zero net county cost associated with this, with this project. I think this is very unique in the state of California. I really want to make sure that that point doesn't get lost.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it's design-build. I think what you guys have come up with is the right thing. We're seeing more of that go around, and we have evidence that saves us money, is your right thing. So supervisor along made a motion, or I made a second, that we go through this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil. And next, next item is coming thirty-one. I don't know thirty-one, before we go, you know.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, board members, Mr. Powers. Hi, I'm Debbie Fromm from the Department of Child Support Services. The matter before you, the board this morning, is a recommendation to please approve a plan of cooperation between us, Ventura County DCSS, and the Humboldt County Department of Child Support Services for us to assume responsibility for their incoming calls. Humboldt receives about 1,000 calls a month. We are already taking about 11,000 calls per month for both Ventura and San Barbara. Expanding our call center is a huge win for the county. Number one, it provides and secures jobs for new county employees. It also secures our position as a high-performing, excuse me, large child support call center. That in turn secures us a larger footprint at the table for discussions with regard to regional call centers, which the state continues to move toward. And finally, it ensures that Ventura calls continue to be handled by your own staff, which ensures continuation of the high customer standards we have long established here. Among all performance numbers, among all of the local child support agencies in the state of California, the average time to answer a call is four and a half minutes. In Ventura, our call center answers all calls in an average of under 30 seconds. Among all local child support agencies...
I want to interrupt you there. That's really impressive. And that just is so good for, you know, a frustrated spouse who was at her wit's end with three kids and no money coming in. That, you know, just to not be lost in a phone basis.
It's huge. It's a huge customer service issue. Among all local child support agencies in the state of California, the average caller abandonment rate is 17%. In Ventura, we average between 1 and 2%. We have the ability to go in and see when those calls were dropped. They're typically dropped in under 10 seconds. We attribute that to the drop in cell phone service, or people call in with the wrong number, as opposed to 17% abandoning, abandoning calls throughout the state that typically is because they cannot get through on the phones. So they lose patience with that. Our call center continues to be staffed. 95% certified bilingual staff. We're the only call center with that bilingual ratio. And 95% of all of our calls are resolved at the point of the first call that comes in without any need to transfer those calls to a caseworker. So that also is a big customer service issue. You have heard from me in the past about our call center. I have no doubt you'll continue to hear from me in the future. But today, I thought I'd do something a little bit different, in that I brought with me our call center manager, the two supervisors, and the team leads. They're hoping I don't ask them to come up to the front, and I won't. I wanted you to see the faces of the leaders who are directly responsible for that 30-second call response time. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
These folks manage teams, two teams, total of 18 call center agents. They also manage the call center when we are asked to step in and cover Spanish-speaking calls from Northern California counties that do not have the demographics to attract bilingual candidates for their positions. We are also a backup within the State Business Continuity Plan for the state call center, which takes, I'd like to say bazillion calls, I don't know, 40, 50,000 calls a month?
We told you a billion times not to exaggerate.
There you go. And we are also one of the backup counties for Los Angeles County, and also primary backup county for Orange County. So they maintain those stats even when San Diego goes down, and we're covering San Diego calls or the state, and I think that makes it even more remarkable. And these are the folks at the helm there.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. If you have any questions, if you have a answer.
First and second, you are.
Debbie, I have to say, I have the privilege of visiting your call center. And something that doesn't show up in the board letter is just the positive energy, enthusiasm that your staff has in a way, during difficult times, they're keeping it very positive. So it's just a great feeling. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
I mean, a question, I know you were showing off.
Yeah.
But you, you should, you should. It's great. I'm looking at this, so Humboldt, do this for Humboldt, and we do about 1,000 calls, what are you expecting to get?
About, anywhere from 900 to 1,000 calls a month.
And I guess I was just asking, maybe I missed this. Are they compensating us for this?
No, Humboldt and San Barbara are not. The state is moving toward regional, not in the way that you're thinking. We are compensated by the state in that we are credited with a per-call dollar amount, which improves our cost effectiveness, and that is a federal performance measure. So you drive, that particular performance measure by either reducing costs, increasing collections. We are doing both, at both sides of the shop, driving up collections as well as helping to defray some of our costs, which, so we get credit for the calls.
So we get credit that gives us, when you say we have to, let's say we hire a new employee.
Right.
We get credit that covers the cost of that new employee?
It would cover some of the cost of that, yes. Shared between the different counties that we're taking, San Barbara and Humboldt as well.
So we don't have any, it doesn't impact us here?
Not financially, no. I should tell you too, we have a, we utilize a tool. It's a, it's called the CC modeler. It's a call center modeler that's used in both public and private sector that assesses our capacity. And we have determined we have the capacity within our existing allocations to, existing positions to take on about 15 to 1,800 more calls. Humboldt is only 1,000, so we're being very conservative of that. Anything past that, we would actually have to have additional state funds, either from the donor counties or from the state, from some other pot of money in order to pay for the full salaries and benefits.
I think it's great. There's no question that the state needs to be looking at, if you're good at what you do, then you should be doing it for other people.
Right.
In fact, there's no reason to duplicate services. And I was just curious if the local tax breaks aren't paying for this, but it works through the state, the system.
It does work through the state's system.
Yeah, and it's great. If we employ the people here, that's wonderful. But I imagine you could probably absorb at least eight or nine percent within your own capacity.
Yes.
Go to the show, you're...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next item, item thirty-two.
Thank you very much, Chair Zaragoza. And let me ask Chris Stevens to come up. We've had conversations with Chris Stevens about this item for some time and have brought it forward. It is, it's an item to simply try to keep the process moving in terms of improvement. Don't want to suggest this is a pure role and end-all everything, but it's to keep the process moving. I'd like to address a couple of things. One, and the first recommendation regarding the amnesty. The waiver, it is, our M A staff has had, and we've had, to come to our office a number of times where a property has gotten so run down, so, and somebody else wants to come in and buy the property from the bank or whatever, and the late fees themselves make it just uneconomical for anybody to get involved, and then the distressed property stays there, distressed rather than getting it solid. So this would, this, the details of the waiver are not part of what we're trying to adopt. It's simply direct our M A to work with county council to come up with something that is legal, that is effective. And the idea would be not an amnesty on any of the actual costs incurred by the department, but just those late fees that run every month in terms of increasing that. And they would, so it gives them the opportunity to examine that work with county council, see if they can find something that clears up backlogs. I might point out that municipalities have done amnesty to clear up backlogs in the past. The second one, I'd like to suggest a modification based on the letter that we received from COLAB talking about this, the work to make the Development Review Committee process a standard requirement. Right now, it is optional for applicants, is that correct, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, that's correct.
And I, I don't think at this point in time that we want to necessarily make that mandatory. So I'd like to simply modify that to say, to say, we're supported by the applicant, make it standard requirement. In other words, we would say, we recommend this because you have an EIR coming, but it has to be supported by the applicant, so the applicant makes that choice. Because the reason we're doing the Development Review Committee is to try to save the applicant's money by identifying things for them at the beginning of the process. But if in their judgment, that's not a savings for them, we shouldn't, we shouldn't force that on them. Item three, the wireless facilities, staff has indicated that our old laws, our old organization guidelines are very much out of date, and that they simply need to be updated. The billing fact sheet seemed to think pretty straightforward, that more information is better. And then, I'm in complete agreement with the COLAB letter that says the initial study process is still too time-consuming, too costly, and staff recognizes it. I think that this would acknowledge that we recognize it, and that we have to keep making improvements. We have made improvements. We started with the Tomberg, you know, efforts to get to excellence. We've made improvements, and this simply says, let's, we need to keep moving on that in terms of the initial review. So the thing I would add to that is to, to this, to this motion would be to work with all stakeholders to, to implement these, these five recommendations. So make sure you get input from stakeholders that deal with the amnesty program, or input from stakeholders that work with the initial study process, et cetera. So anyway, that's the, that's, that is the proposal.
Supervisor, I just want, on the late fees, are we talking about the fees where the fees no far exceed the value of the property?
No, I don't think we have any late fees at that level. No. These are the late fees for when...
For the initial.
A person is unable to pay their bill, the fee schedule adopted by the board has a late fee that is put on, you know, in addition to the bill, 2%.
Okay, because I've had quite a few people come up, you know, so you know, the fees, you know, that are...
The, if you recall, when we initiated the Civil Administrative Penalties Program, I'll kind of use a carrot and stick analogy here. That was, that was a stick to put out there to the community to get folks to come in, to avoid the penalty, to take care of their cases. It was very successful. Our backlog of cases, we were able to bring that down substantially. What we're seeing with the economy over the last few years is it's starting to creep back up because folks are not able to get in, can afford to get into the system. And then what happens is these late fees start to accumulate, and it becomes even harder for them to get, to come on in and take care of, of their violation, for example. Or in some cases even, a standard permit process that they began, they run into some economic difficulties, and they haven't been able to pay those bills, and they start to accrue these late fees. So the idea here was to provide now a carrot, say, come on in, and we'll work for you to take care of this. And in exchange for you coming in and doing that, we will waive these late fees. So that was the idea.
And you send you letters to those folks?
Yes, and this would also allow us to reach out to them, as opposed to waiting for them to come to the front counter to work with them. And when they do come in today, individuals, we do work with them. We want them to get this resolved. We work with them to reduce fees and get into payment plans and things of that nature. But this allows to kind of reach out across the board and get the message out.
If I could, I just want to add one thing, and that is, and that I, that I would hope that you, as you create this program, you create it so it creates incentives and doesn't create disincentives for people to say, well, I'll just wait because there is an amnesty for this to win. And incentives just like, take care of it quickly, because you get the, and there was some talk with staff about saying, you know, take care of it quickly, and you'll have full amnesty. If you wait, you, you know, but if you'll use your professional judgments.
Yeah, yeah. As you mentioned earlier, a number of communities have done things like this. We'll, we'll, we'll learn from that. We'll gather more information on that with county council to come up with a program to incentivize. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions if I might, or I imagine.
I just wanted to define, you say late fees, are you talking about late fees on a payment that's due? Or are you talking about penalty fees?
No. The way this refers to late fees, that is just a reference to a late fee for an unpaid bill.
Bill.
Because it means for unpaid staff costs associated with gaining compliance, so that isn't what this is then. It's not for unpaid staffs.
Two favorite things.
Okay, sure, yeah. No, no, it is, it is confusing. The late fee is a fee any of us would pay if you received a bill for $100 on the first, and it said it's due in 30 days. If you, if you do not pay it, there is a late fee. And so the next month, your bill would be $102.
But what about receiving that bill for? Because usually I get a permit, I got to pay in advance, right?
Fixed fee permits, you pay in advance.
Are you talking about if somebody said, there's a violation, you came out and we charged you $1,000 on a violation, you didn't pay the violation fee, and now there's a fee of 2% because you're late? Is that what you're talking about?
No, the, this is a fee on our staff time only. So if we went out to investigate a, a reported violation, confirm the violation, and then they did not come in and get the permits, or what they needed to resolve that violation, and did not pay their bills, that, for that staff time, they would get a late fee on a monthly basis added to that.
But it's only a staff time, okay.
Correct.
Okay, so if this is still something that the homeowner or whatever did not do themselves, something, something was done to them, and then there's a fee to them, or cost to them, and now we're talking about what you didn't pay, that's, that's a late fee. Because again, all of a sudden, if this person has a violation, somebody reported them that violation, you came out, you incurred $500. It wasn't something that came to you and said, hey, I've got, I want a permit, I want this, and I just didn't pay the bill, or something. You've asked them to do work, because usually you get a retainer and everything upfront for that kind of...
A small portion of them are permits, as you might, where someone came in in advance to get a permit, and then for whatever reason was unable to pay their bills. So there is a small portion of them. A larger portion are the violation cases that you described. But as a reminder, we do not charge those fees until we give them an opportunity to resolve the violation. So if we had to do staff work, let's say that cost $500, but they came in, worked with us, got the permits they needed, and took care of the case, we do not bill that $500.
Okay, that's what I said, because I mean, your office has been really good with us going in, and you've got... going in and we've got this issue, we'll waive all that, just please, because I remember before, I was like to sit back in that corner when the whole penalty, was the whole thing was to bring people in, to help them come in, and you've been good with that right now. So that's why I just want to understand where these fees are coming from that they're laid on.
These are, most of these will be much older cases where they just simply have not come in to, to, to get the permits, and this is a way, and, and because they're old, they can get to be quite costly, they start to compound, as you know, late fees. And so this is, this is to provide a little carrot to folks, say, hey, come on in, let's take care of this. And be, you know, it's kind of part of our outreach program, trying to reach out to the community with this information rather than waiting for them to come into the counter with a big bill.
We have, I have a, or there's, I have a couple of speakers, I want to hear the speakers first before we continue.
Sure, if I could just say one thing while we're on, on that topic, we had quite a few of these programs, but, you know, somebody literally started, started using their yard as a dump, and, and the neighborhood was just, you know, dramatically affected by it. And so the, and what we had with all that backlog of cases, what we had before was, we had 1,000 cases backlog because you had a fine, you had a penalty, because you did something, you know, a serious violation, but there was no, no incentive to pay it now or pay it later. So given that situation, people would just always put it off. And so the neighborhood may be stuck with both the violation and the county stuck, you know, with this bill just rolling over. And then if somebody ever sold a property, and they say, well, we'll just, you know, let it be taken care of. So we, then as part of the civil penalties process, we came up with civil penalty and some kind of incentive to say, pay the fine, so that you don't, you don't have an incentive to, to not pay it. That's what this came from. Now some of those, they're, what they're suggesting is this may be an, this may be a time for them to come up with some kind of penalty program that they designed and makes sense to encourage some of those people to come in because those, those late fees are for some reason now keeping them from coming in. It's all part of that same thing that we should adopt in some type of, to decrease that backlog and try to get compliance.
Sounds like it works to most of those issues, right? Like you say, the backlog is not 1,000 cases.
Well, it's, it's now creeping, well, it actually was 2,000 before our, before the penalties program came in place, we dropped it down, I want to say maybe...
Cellular antenna guidelines, I know we've been working on, so I definitely support moving those forward. And then finally, I'm not exactly sure what item five is, but I certainly support, you know, all these county strategic plan efforts, so I, I support the motion.
Just, yeah, just, just to, just to clarify, I think item five is simply a direction to go out and work with the stakeholders and, and recognize the initial process. I completely agree with the comments in...
...process for previously screened amendments. We will complete phase one of the Saticoy area plan update. That work is funded by a grant from the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG. We have a consultant on board, and we hope to report back on the results of this planning effort to your board early next year. Should we be awarded one of the two pending grant proposals, we will also initiate the second phase of work on the Saticoy area plan. Using a federal grant program, several staff will work... Well, that's an excellent question. I hope we have a very good chance. SCAG has a total in excess of 3,000 units, so they can distribute that through this revision request with that...
I believe Karl Moore House is on that committee still, so maybe we can work with them too.
It, it certainly makes, it certainly makes sense. I mean, it's...